All right, welcome Nottingham to the Select Board meeting. It's our last one of the year, hopefully, for Monday, December 23rd. We're gonna start the meeting with the president, uh, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next week, huh? What could you do next week?
See if we can get it all taken care of tonight.
No.
The payroll for the...
I'll make a motion to approve the manifest of 1223 and payroll of 1224.
I'll second.
Well, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Make a motion to approve the non-public minutes of 12:02.
I'll second.
12:24, I will second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Did you have a budget meeting? Was that for the school?
Yeah, it was for the school.
So I didn't have any meetings.
We probably don't need to go through that anyways, because this is a special...
All right, well, I'm just gonna keep it somewhat normal if we had something somebody wanted to say or needed to say. All right. So review of actions for last meetings. We're gonna go over everything. We're gonna welcome, you both coming up?
If you want us to.
Sure. We're gonna talk about the expenditure right now of the new side-by-side ATV vehicle for the police department.
I did bring just some quick literature for you to peruse over, well, thank you.
Good to see you too, Steve.
Thank you.
Sorry, I've been so busy with so much stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for obviously having, am I too close to you, Doug? I'm sorry. Thank you guys for me with me. Sorry I wasn't here last week or whatever. Totally would've came. So you want me to just roll right into it?
Yeah, I guess talk about maybe what the need is and then...
Yeah. So obviously, it's been well-known and it keeps being thrown around that our ATV right now has reached the end of its life cycle. It's a 2005, hard to get parts for when it breaks. Chris does all the maintenance on it, he can talk to you about that, but he does even though people make fun of it and they're like, oh, really? We do baby it and we do reluctantly use it. We use it when we can, but we haven't used it as much because it is kind of on its last leg. So I see an opportunity here because I definitely think it's useful. We've used it in the 20 years that we've had it for many things. It's proactive and it's reactive. And I can get into detail about what we use it for, the reactionary and the proactive enforcement. But it's something, again, that I guess just to break everything down, that I as the department head see that we definitely use something like that. And to see something like that go away, so like when it breaks, I don't foresee us being able to get anything new that will go in its place anytime soon, given obviously what's going on financially, everything with the town, budgetary. So I see an opportunity where there's some extra monies that could utilize it. And so what we did, me and Chris spent a lot of work on it. Chris obviously did a lot of work on it in really looking into the side-by-side, the UTV side of it rather than getting another four-wheeler. And that's for many reasons. Obviously, it's 2025 soon. UTVs are very, very popular, they're much safer, and they're used in this capacity in law enforcement, in search and rescue, finding, you know, missing juveniles or elderly people, people that are, you know, somewhat diminished. Enforcement side, same thing. We went, you know, we could get, we could get an ATV. They're just as much money, if not more, and they don't do everything that we would need it to do. So that's why we did that. And I guess more importantly, like I said, I don't want to see this go away. We have an opportunity right now to get one. The other one, if it goes, it's gone, that's it. Then we can just be like, oh, well, we're sorry, we couldn't get to you or we couldn't respond to that or assist with that because we just don't have anything. And I would hate to see that. We've done that a lot in our town. I hate to say that, but why would we kick the can down the road? You guys like to use that term. If we know something is useful to us and it's a resource, it's a tool, even if we use it once or twice and it saves a life or prevents something from happening, it's worth its weight in gold. We carry a lot of equipment on our bodies, on our person, that we don't use every day, but when we need it, it's worth its weight in gold. So that's my big overall spiel about a UTV and why we need one. But as you can see, you know, passenger capacity, we have the ability. If we need to throw another officer in with another officer for safety, for whatever, maybe, you know, I can think of many times that I've actually had to go to the state park and look for somebody who is suicidal and has a gun. This would be a great situation, you know, to drive up in there and then get this thing out and go in there, be able to put our equipment that we need, hate to say, like, you know, our tools that we need to be able to go and engage with this individual and have like a safe outcome. There's many instances too where like the fire department, hate to say it, right? We get called first too. I mean, if they have a search and rescue, we receive that call via dispatch. We're there first, we're 24/7, we're all, you know, we're on the road. This is a situation where we could deploy this very, very easily and help them and assist with that in those types of situations. You know, the package that we got, we, you know, we didn't go out and get a $50,000 police package, UTV. We really, Chris did his due diligence and really got it to fit our needs. And so that price is actually, because Chris is gonna do some of the, you know, he'll put in the windshield, he'll do the, you wanna talk to that, Chris? Because you know what I mean?
So the stripped-down version, if you will, which is not really, it's not really stripped. It's the middle, middle-of-the-road version.
The SP 570 Premium?
Yeah, the premium's the middle of the road, if you will. That one doesn't come with a roof, doesn't come with a windshield, doesn't come with a winch. And those are three, like, that's the bare minimum for like operating. Like, I've used the ATV in negative 15 degrees trying to find people in the woods. And it's awful. It's absolutely miserable to be out there. But that's part of what I signed up for, that's part of that. But a big portion of the building of it was to try and keep the cost low so that way we can utilize a piece of equipment that is more useful to us. The hard part with the ATV, and I am the primary user of it and everyone is trained in it, but usually, it just so happens that I'm always the one that gets to deploy it. The big thing with it is with the ATV, we have no storage capacity. So I, we have racks, but everything, if you look at it now, you've seen me at the parade using it. I have a little Walmart box on the back of it that's bungee-coated down just to have a ball of water and a clip bar with me. You know, and I've had that same setup since I revamped the ATV in 2020, 2019, 2020. And that was just to get it back on. So the one that's on there for 15,000, that's the premium, that's the middle one, that's the one where we still have to, that does include the windshield, the roof and the winch. The North Star version is kind of the one that's like, is the most useful to us. That one allows us to be fully operational in all weather. And that's the biggest thing for us is when we start putting ourselves in danger, which is in every day to begin with, but when we get out into those situations. I remember a couple of years ago, we had an instance where I had to go down the salt trails to look for a juvenile. And I did almost 60 miles that night on the ATV. And it was, it was in the teens, upper teens. And I'm obviously out there, you know, we're doing what we gotta do and we're gonna do everything we can to find the people that we need to. One of the things that I heard on the last meeting was maneuverability on it. So this machine is the mid-size unit. There is a full-size one that's 60 inches wide. Right now, our ATV is 50 inches wide. So yes, it is more maneuverable with the sacrifice of our capacity bringing a second person with us or bringing someone out. That's the biggest thing. We put ourselves in a lot of danger if I have to put someone behind me while I'm doing whatever it is that I'm doing, trying to stay on the trail. So this unit is 56 inches wide. This keeps our ability to go down the vast majority of trails. It remains relevant in that as well as the maneuverability. So, and the overall machine size isn't that much bigger.
You could even have somebody on a stretcher on the back portion of it.
If we...
If you really, in a life-or-death situation.
Right. If we really had to get sporty with it, absolutely. It's got a full-size bed on it. The bed capacity is that of safely carrying someone if we really needed to extract that person.
And to outfit this $15,000 one, you'd still have a couple thousand dollars that you'd have to put into it for lights and...
Yeah, the lights, I got a quote from OME, they're like $2,000. And I can get, I can get that with my equipment budget or with, you know, it can be absorbed in the 2025 budget. I wouldn't be asking for anything for that.
So wouldn't it be better to have a four-capacity person, you know, a UTV versus a two-person?
So the issue we run into with the four-person is now we start getting into length and length impedes our ability to get to some of the smaller places or tighter places.
Right. But that would give you better or bigger bed capacity as well because usually the seats fold down, the back seats fold down to give that...
The bed is the same size, the seats, they're fixed seats. All that it would give us is extra storage capacity underneath that seat with the sacrifice of maneuverability. So it'd be same width, but the vehicle would, the wheelbase would be longer, which means I can't fit it on the trailer that we currently have.
Or in the shed.
Or in the shed, which encumbers another, another cost on that one. And I will say, like, being the one out there and deploying it, there's only been a few times where I've had to bring someone with me. And on the ATV, it's a little sketchy because you, they're sitting behind you, they're hanging on to you while you're trying to lean and do your thing.
And it's not a seat, it's only built for one person.
Technically, exactly, you know.
Yeah, I can actually speak to a call that I had a couple of months ago. An individual who had Alzheimer's, got lost in like two miles of woods and was barefooted. And it would've been a great situation, honestly, to just drive in there and drive him back out because we had to walk him back out two miles. And he got pretty cut up doing that. They couldn't get the Stokes in there to carry him or anything like that. So I think of moments like that throughout my career, and there's been several of those where this would just be huge. Like I said, you can't put a price tag on it too. I know that it's on the comfy cozy side, but people like to say, oh, you only use it in the Christmas parade. It is, it is definitely a community thing too. When you have an apparatus like that, it gets people talking, gets itself there in the public face easily to see people, kids like to see it, they come up to it. And the community engagement is huge. I mean, the overall emphasis of being police officers is to build trust in your community and for them to feel safe and that you're there to help them. So I can't, I can't not say that enough too, is that obviously with everything that says it's gonna pay for itself in gold, but just to really get out there and be able to intermingle and say, hey, how you doing, what's going? I mean, people like to pick on it, but I don't care. The majority of people don't and they think it's a good thing, so. It's needed, it's a useful thing. I would hate to see us miss this opportunity. We did price out a bigger, not a bigger one, one that's more expensive. It's like 19,000, but that would have doors and everything else. So I, I mean, we do have different quotes if you wanted to see those as well. But this was what me and Chris got together with and said, what does this department need? What fits its need? What can we do without? What sacrifices can we make but still doing the right thing at the end of the day and getting the job done?
Can I ask, how often in the wintertime do you use? I know you've described a couple of situations, but do you use it like fairly often?
I would say at least, at least a couple of times a winter. And a lot of it just has to do with where we can get. And our cruisers and truck can only get obviously so far without wrecking those. And these ATV, side-by-side, UTV, OHRV allows us to get into those places. And sometimes, a lot of the time, like we've had, you know, it's helping our fire department a lot of the time with it and it's helping us get those people back as quickly as we can to obviously avoid that. But I would say at least a couple of times in the winter specifically. Obviously, the summer ramps up because people are in the park, people are doing other things. It's much more hospitable outside.
So I'm just wondering, like, the, and I appreciate you trying to keep it reasonable here, but the model that you are looking at for the 15,000, I mean, it doesn't have a roof, I mean, it has a roof-ish, but it's not really enclosed and doesn't have the heat.
Yeah, so that one, so that one doesn't have the rear windshield. It'll have a front windshield and a roof once it's outfitted, but it doesn't have doors. It doesn't have the defrost or the heat. That's as bare bones.
This is the one that you quoted for that?
So the 19,000 is the one that comes, they call it the ProShield cab. It's weather sealed for...
So it's all enclosed?
Yeah, it's to keep us and anyone else that we bring safe.
That's a copy of that one if you wanted to, for your consideration.
And that one comes already outfitted with actually, that machine has...
Sure.
Pretty much all the upgrades that we would need minus lights, minus emergency lights. So it comes with the upgraded LEDs, it has the cab, it has the defrost, it has the heating, it has windows, the doors are removable if we do need to use it in the summertime or when we use it in the summertime. It's definitely more versatile and it's the same footprint as the previous machine. And it's got, it's got a bunch of other upgrades. It's got heavier-duty wheels, heavier-duty tires, so that way...
Yeah, it looks like it's the same model as the 570.
Yes.
Or they just...
Yeah, they stack it up a little bit.
UTV.
It's a UTV.
What is UTV?
It's a utility vehicle, it's such a utility vehicle.
Versus an ATV.
So the way like I look at it too is that we have like hundreds of acres of woods in Nottingham, including the state park. This machine is useful for this town, this is what we need. When we have really big searches, when things really go down at the park, we have all those other resources that come in, fishing game, all that. We can't, a lot of times, you know, we need to go out there with them and we're like hopping on with them or in one of their vehicles, but we really should have our own when things really happen. People do go to that park and commit crime. This, we've been doing, except for the past couple of years, because we're worried about it, but we do directed patrols. I'll allow four- or five-hour patrols to get on Reservation Road, get into the state park, and really just have our presence out there, right? So it's really proactive enforcement to, so people can be like, oh, wow, there is law enforcement out here, you know? And it's a good way for them to know that because there's a lot that goes on there that we just can't get to or we just don't know of. This will help us get out there better in many ways. It's just really huge. Same thing on the beach.
How many trails that?
Beach patrols, like at the beach, you know, it's gonna be easy for us to just kinda like sneak in and just be like, hey, how you guys, how's everybody doing today? I mean, things do happen. I mean, we, we don't live in a bubble, so.
So why did you pick this model? Why did you pick Polaris versus a whole bunch of other?
So I'm familiar with Polaris. Polaris makes a good size, mid-size unit. I'm familiar with the 570 engine, which I know is, I'm getting into the weeds a little bit on that, but just telling you my side, I know the 570 is a good engine. They make a 1,000cc model, but they're one of the only companies that makes a half-decent mid-size model that's sub $20,000. You can look at Kawasaki, look at the Ridge, look at the Mule. The Mule is more of an agricultural rig. You can look at deer, you can get the Gator, which is very agricultural compared. You know, there's Kubota, there's Yamaha, all those, the same thing applies in the price range and reliability department. And from what I've experienced with Polaris personally, outside of here where I have, I actually have a full-size 570, which is same engine, just four inches wider. I beat the crap out of that thing, you know? And I see what it can do and I know that even, this new machine is much more, is much more upgraded than what mine is, is stock. The big thing with it is the size, weight, availability and parts availability because inevitably something mechanical is gonna have issues. It's one of the most popular units, it's one of the most popular engines, which means parts availability. This engine has been in, in side-by-sides and ATVs for the past, I believe, 10 years. So there's a plethora of parts, there's a plethora of other stuff that we can do to keep that engine running, which is obviously, that's our biggest part in that one.
So the other thing is that you didn't have this in the CIP.
No, we did not. That was my bad. It would've been in 2025 at the CIP. It would've been in 2025.
CIP's supposed to be looking out six years.
Yeah, sorry, my bad. Put it in there now. If it's not in the CIP, it doesn't mean we don't need it. I apologize if it's not there.
No, no, I'm not, I'm just, but, but that's the whole thought.
Sure, I got it.
You have...
That's what you're hooked on? Are you stuck on that?
Well, no, I mean, you have an ATV that you think that is going bad or you're gonna need to replace at some point. You have to think about it out there.
Gotcha.
So...
Also, these units are, we're not the only, obviously, police department that has UTVs. They're very popular.
You also have the power lines that run through this town, which have trails and you're not gonna get through with a truck on those.
No, I mean, just, just the one just past the school right there at like 2:49.
Yeah, and they're all accessible to the public.
They are, yeah. People go in there all the time and that's where...
Off Canard Road, off Priest Road, off, I mean...
Yep.
Off Case Road, there's, I mean, maybe not the power lines, but there's trails and stuff.
Yeah, we've had issues out there. They go out there and they shoot, you know what I mean?
I mean, even accessing behind, you know, Marston and getting in there deeper, it helps us. A lot of it is just getting that person out to where we can get that next thing, you know?
It's very useful. I mean, again, there's so many usages for this and, you know, it's, my apologies for not putting it on the CIP. Definitely needed to be on the CIP and it should be on the CIP. I would not come here tonight to tell you that we need it if we didn't need it. It's a need, it's not a want. There's plenty of things that, you know, people just want. This, this is a need, it's a need for the community, it's a good thing for the community. There's definitely a lot of pros to it. And I think, like I said, this is, this is an opportunity, and you guys have done it before, John knows, because he's been on the board, where we've had extra monies due to vacancies and they've acted. I've asked for tasers in the past and we got those that we didn't have any money for. And they acted and they did, in my opinion, they did the right thing and they got it. And it's a much-needed tool. And again, you hope to never use it, but the times that you do, it pays itself so many ways, so.
This alone, I wish we had it last, last Monday. This means a lot.
It's huge, you know, I know.
No, it does.
I'm sorry, yeah.
It's better than coming in with just a plane, you know, and I...
No, I, sorry.
I apologize to bring you guys into this meeting, but...
Totally my fault, John, so.
You know, always start with a price ticket and not a explanation, you know, which is great. I mean, I have one, I have a UTV. And I would recommend going with the enclosed one for what you guys do. I know it's a little bit more money, but I've been on the, out there in the elements with my just little front windshield and nothing in the back and...
But I think adding those other features later is gonna be more costly.
Oh, yeah, totally more costly.
They don't, they don't fit right. Especially if it's an aftermarket thing.
The doors alone, brand-new, to like, to buy them and add them is like $7,000. Just for the doors and rear window.
And you could be out in any weather, so, you know, you're not privy to say, well, it's kinda bad.
Yeah, we can't be like, we don't wanna go.
I'm not going.
The past two nights have been brutal.
You know, again, those right there are perfect examples of what it's been brutal out there that you need.
And that's really when you need it.
That'll be what happens.
That's seriously when stuff happens.
Honestly, like, when you ask that question, I hate to say, the times that I think of using that is when it's so cold out and we've used that and it's like, oh my God.
That's when the people out there are probably gonna need your assistance for those times.
Correct, yeah.
It's usually not on the beautiful sunny day at 70 degrees.
Right, so true, so true.
That's wonderful. Thank you for your explanation on the Polaris. I mean, I've got a Kawasaki, but whatever. But at least you know why you researched what you wanted.
A lot of it's off-road capability. They have the best suspension for it, they have the most travel, most ground clearance right out of the box. And that, that's what we need, self-sufficiency while we're out, away from our office/cruiser.
Do you guys have keys to the gates at the state park? If you needed to get in for some reason?
Absolutely. Yeah, we do.
For all the gate...
We have them all in our grade, but yeah, we have them all on the PD, yep. Yeah, and we have both, so... There has never been a gate I can't get into.
They have a master key if they...
You know, I'm like, what? There's never been a gate I can't get into.
And if not, there's always ways around. So... You can cover the fact of getting it lit with your...
Correct, yeah, it's...
The blue lights.
Absolutely, done, yeah. Absorb in the budget, yeah. Yep.
And again, the reason people, if you're watching on the side, of why this is, this is, we have the excess money only due to the fact that we are currently seeking a full-time police officer, which we do not have. That was aligned in the budget. That is the only reason why we have the excess money to be looking at purchasing this. This is not something that would, if we were fully staffed, would be probably able to buy. So this is why they're here tonight at this hour or at this time of year since we're in the budget war, is why we're considering this.
I really think that we'd be better off with more capacity for a person because of, that's, I mean, if you got two officers in the thing and you're fighting, you know, bringing somebody back.
Yeah, but then you'd need to buy a trailer and you'd need a new shed.
It's way more...
Right, but... And you can't put the tailgate and sit down on the back, because I've done it. One of the office times.
Right in the back. It's just...
With ample space and stuff.
Yeah, and that would bring that price up to 25,000 if you're looking at the 19 one, and we need a $3,000 trailer. So again, we just, you know, for what, for what we need to do, I think this is the most cost-effective. And I, but I appreciate, John, you're trying to get it something...
I'm almost...
Like, listen, I would be like, yeah!
I would rather do things...
But that'd be a want.
Once and do it right.
No, and I think...
Then do it over.
So if I can, and I think that you guys are on the right track, I think actually the right way would be to enclose it, get us those doors. Instead of spending the 15, spend the 19 and get it done the right way. I think that's...
Well, even if you're out there in its wintertime and somebody that's, they're caught in the element, whatever.
Right, that's kinda warm them up, right.
You have a place to warm them up on that trail.
Absolutely.
The other thing that we're able to do is to supplement the cost of getting the four-seater or the, this is a four-seater, it's the mid, like I said, the mid-size unit, is they have an attachment that you can put inside the bed, a skid attachment, which has a third seat in the bed and a place to put someone like flat if you need it to. Which is obviously, that's more along the line.
And you can fit three people in the bench seat. Like, we sat comfortably with all our gear on it, we're pretty...
It'd be tight. Yeah, it's tight, but you can definitely do it.
Chris, you could put one butt cheek on this, we could totally...
I mean, honestly...
We would do it.
Done sketchier stuff.
Thank you. Matter of life and death, we do what it takes, so.
Three is very tight in the front.
Yeah, even on a full-size, but make do with what we...
Do what you gotta do.
We do. Because again, and you guys are understanding is, a lot of times of what we're doing really is helping people that are either lost or diminished capacity in some way or the other.
And oftentimes, I've seldom had to bring a second person with me. Usually it's coming out that I have that second person.
Right, somebody's like, I need a ride because I'm not walking anymore.
Yeah, or it's a hiker that decided, yeah, I'm not doing Shaw Trail anymore, I'm done. You know, North Ridge Mountain, done. The hard part with this, the...
Even if there was two of you, you could easily bring somebody out and turn around.
Correct.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Like I said, the only thing, the hard part about the two-row, the four-seater, is the length, the need for an additional trailer. The trailer won't fit inside the current shed because it's just too long at that point, so.
You talk about putting it in the shed, but is there a cover standard on it? Or is there, you have to, I mean, usually it's not standard.
No, no, you'd have to buy a cover if we do that. The other thing...
Well, I mean, again, the cover's like 200 bucks or 300 bucks, whatever.
But that's not as good as a shed.
No, no, but again, when the, when the utility vehicle, this is on the trailer, where if it's on the trailer, you know, it's gonna be easier and quicker for them to get to wherever they're going than where they're always being shed.
When it's extreme like it was last night when we were down into single slash negatives, When it's extreme like it was last night when we were down into single slash negatives, I'll often take it off the trailer and put it inside the Sallyport. And, and that's where sometime, like our UTV sits in the Sallyport and, and that way we can preserve that, that machine as long as we can. Because we all know the winters kill things, batteries, um, all sorts of stuff.
Normally sitting on the trailer in the shed.
Yeah. So that's usually where it is. So once the weather stops being what it is, that comes out, goes on the trailer and it stays on the trailer. And there's a.
It's easy deployable.
Yeah, we have battery tender on it and all that kind of stuff. So that way the.
I'd just say buy the cover.
Oh, yeah. I think we should have a cover too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Short money.
It is part of.
And it's going to save it the, yeah.
I use mine all the time and I'm good at undercover and everything. So it's still.
Good to have.
We baby things.
For the price of what it is, it's good to keep it, you know? Uh, and that way even when people are around.
Right.
You know, it's not like it's good to get inside. It's.
Yeah. For sure.
Other questions? Guys leaning towards the upper, the.
I would.
The upper model?
I would.
I would.
I, I would definitely rather see that the upper one makes more sense.
Well, at least we're all in agreement of going with the one with the doors and the heat and the, the system. So maybe that was worth coming in tonight because you already got the other one.
Yeah.
Everything happens for a reason, right?
So I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the Polaris Ranger.
I, I would say that we should look at our stuff first.
Okay, I, I did.
I would, I would say we should go over our budget and things before we approve this.
Okay.
Why? Did you see something in the budget that?
No, I, well, I just wanted to make sure that we discussed everything that was.
Yeah, I had looked at it. We didn't do it last time.
Right. There was plenty of money to do.
So we're going to go, all right, so just make this quick. Do, we can go over the budget and then before we adjourn our meeting and go into non-public, we'll just tell you, I mean, yes. Unless something really weird shows up that I don't know about.
Okay.
We'll be going for the 19. We, uh, the coverage, can you just, if you have your phone?
Yeah, I can get the, we get a deal on the Polaris stuff.
Just so that we make the motion to spending 19,000 if it's $800 because you're getting the cover. We can just put that in because since you don't have it.
For sure.
So just figure that out.
Get your number.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They haven't approved it yet, but yes, that's the one that they're talking about.
Uh, next item, facilities manager?
Um, Alan will not be present tonight, but I did put it on there because that was another item that we were going to try to see if we could move some line items around in the existing budget to potentially fund that for 2025.
So do we want to put that with the budget as we go into there and talk about it then as?
Yeah, we'd do the 2024 first and we can just kind of cover that, what we did in the 2025 budget.
That's what. Uh, the position that we had last year was the facilities manager.
Right.
Uh, there's a cost affected by that. It was granted by a warrant article before. Uh, that's how the position was created. And we'll be deciding whether if we keep that as in the budget as a line item or if that position goes away or wherever. We're talking about it tonight.
Oh, right now.
Yeah, this is our end of the meeting. We're going to try to get everything done.
Please.
So we can all have a nice holiday without having to come.
Exactly.
Back in.
All right.
Uh, so where do you guys want to start off?
Well, I think with the 2024 budget status, go through that and upper ones.
Um, so your report, the budget report under the second column, those are expenses up through the last account payable run that was issued. Um, Friday, the manifest that you approved today. So that shows a bottom line. Total expenditures of $4,394,791.32 out of a $4,848,608 budget. So for discussion purposes, there's about $453,816. Uh, the payroll that you've also just signed the manifest for that will go out tomorrow is another $86,286. And then I have, um, compiled a list of items that are, um, pending through the fire department. I potentially put a placeholder in there for the UTV. So we'll have to amend that. And then, uh, some other items that we're waiting on such as the repair of the six-wheeler, um, estimating about 20,000 for that. The rental grader that we're using while the other one was down and then potential winter subcontractors for incoming storms tonight, this week, um, just to kind of put a plug figure in there so we could see what we were working with. Um, so just with all those things considered, um, and again, we have to make the adjustment for the UTV once we get to that point, but that would leave a potential balance of about $253,000.
That includes the UTV or not?
That does include the UTV.
It does.
Yep.
Well, it's going to be another $4,000 added to it.
Well, that's included that if it was 19 grand.
Right.
Okay. That leaves a 253.
Right.
Okay.
So there will be additional invoices that come in after the first of the year. We usually don't close out the, um, the calendar year until the first two or three weeks in. Just because we know we're going to get straggler invoices, but for the most part, I think we're, we've captured just about everything we possibly can. We don't have any more payroll to run for 2024. It's just going to be those residual, you know, we might get a, a nap or a sandal or, um, miscellaneous invoices, but nothing of volume. Um, so typically on a default budget, we would not have excess funds. But again, not only was it the police department understaffed, but also the fire department had, uh, two vacant full-time positions. So you're talking salary plus benefits for the year.
All right, you can't do away with them because hopefully we fill them.
Well, 253 is not the worst situation to be in, but.
No. Now, last week we were talking about a grader.
Let's knock it up.
Where do we stand on our fund balance?
We're at 12.2% retainage. So our goal is 12%, between 5 and 17%.
So we're still in the gold. So.
Yes, the, the town established fund balance policy is a goal of 12%.
So we're right in the.
We are.
Right, we're.
You know, based on this information, we probably won't have a whole lot returning to it to build it further, but we are at least within the goal range.
What's the average increase a year that, that needs to be to stay within the?
It, it really varies.
And how much we got in highway truck reserve fund?
Uh, 200. I just had it pulled up there with me for just a moment. Highway Truck Capital Reserve Fund, 282,000. $186.50 as of the third quarter. And the only, um, Steve did reach out to Windmill to find out if they would honor that price that was supposed to expire on December 17th. He did have a call into them, but as of this afternoon, he did not get a response back on that. So.
I don't think it would have gone up a lot. And we could enter into at least a purchase agreement with them. That was a straight-up purchase, right?
Yes. So I think if we completely deplete the highway truck capital reserve fund, you would still need 182,000 of this potential $253,000 balance to make it happen.
Right.
And then you're talking about only adding $70,000 into it potentially in 2025, adding it back in.
To build the backup.
Right, but we'd be ahead.
Right.
By having that grader.
Correct.
Well, again, the, the grader is, is not a, is not a want, it's a need.
Right, the grader is definitely a need. Right. We need the grader. In my opinion, we need the grader more than, I'm sorry, we need the grader more than the UTV.
Tip? No, that's, that's fine. That's why I'm looking at it. So with the excess budget here, what, what was the grader cost again?
464,000.
I mean, I can't imagine that. Here's your 464,000.
Yeah, I don't think.
464, 400.
464, 400, correct. And that's for Komatsu. And it looks like he hasn't.
It is on the CIP also, correct?
It is.
It's been on the CIP.
It's been on the CIP.
It's on that right now for 2026.
Correct. It was, we had, um, Steve had updated it because the, the quote, we knew that we weren't going to be able to get one as it was quoted three years ago.
I know it's been on there for like six years now. So it's not like it's something that's new that, again, that's something we keep pushing down the road of not buying because of the cost of it.
Right, because it's very expensive and the other one has been going, has, we've been able to maintain the other one.
But it's been broken down more times this year than it's probably ever has in the past and.
Exactly.
It's been out of service. And we know how people don't like to see it out of service because we hear about it.
Right. Oh, yeah.
And the, Steve's intention is to continue to run the other one simultaneous until it gets to the point of no repair.
Have we got it back yet?
No.
No.
No, there were, uh, the parts had to be sent out.
But if we buy a new grader, I'm, I'd be very, i- if we start dumping thousands of dollars into the other one every year, when the fact that we have a new one, I don't think. I mean, again, if it's a, if it's a $50 or, or you know, a $500 fix. But if anything starts to get into the three, four, $5,000, I think there's a limit where you guys should be able to say next year that that's not going to be worth our expenditure of money to keep saving this thing when you got a nice new one sitting there. And when they grade the road, it takes more than, takes three employees because now they've got somebody in the, the signs going up, the watching to make sure the thing is, it's not. They're a lot more safety conscious, uh, grading the roads than, than years past. Uh, at least for. And I got it. It's, it is true. It's just go watch the operation. So.
Do you see the balance of that capital reserve fund plus?
Um, 280, 282.
282. To make the purchase, we'd have to pull 182 out of it. Out of that old verge.
Well, I don't think you can commit the full 257,000. I mean, that's, is that tight?
What, the 253,000?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if you committed it all and something happens in, I mean, again.
In the next week.
So I think you'd leave more unreserved and take more out of more, I mean, more out of the capital reserve. No.
Probably doesn't, you're right. I mean, for safety reasons, yes, I agree.
Yeah.
So.
I would advise you to deplete the capital reserve fund before we overcommit the operating budget. Yes. Yes.
So please.
Sorry if I wasn't saying.
182, four-ish?
Yep. To a point, leave about $70,000 unreserved.
You could vote to commit.
Here's the time to make this.
We, we, we have a quote for the grader. So you could vote to commit the funds based on the final expenditure report once we close out the year. I mean, we're not, we're not signing a purchase and sales agreement.
I just, I just always get, you know.
I know.
It, it's just a number that I have to say that yes, I, I said yes to. And it's, it's a number of 400. Yeah, I mean, it's a, you know.
464,000?
You know, that's, you know, always. I understand the need, the wants and everything that goes on to it. I mean, we definitely need it.
Well, it's something that's, you, you can take off the CIP in two years.
Right, well, we just take.
2026, 2027, 2028, there were a lot of things on there.
And we don't even know if we'll have it left in the budget even to do it.
Right.
Because again, I mean, we could face a default budget again next year or even the 4%. Then you'd have to, since it's now the warrant articles come in, you can't throw it in as a warrant article and say, hey, just because we need it this year, or we could in the past.
Right.
Before we had this 4%, you could have put it as a warrant article saying, we want to buy this. So we're kind of in a situation probably where if we are going to buy it, this might be the time where it has the least minimum effect to the, the voters, uh, and the residents in Nottingham. You know, towards their taxes.
That's, I agree completely.
Uh, and it's with the amount of houses that are on dirt roads or you need to access a dirt road in order to get to wherever, uh, the house or residence.
Were those cruisers patrolling those roads?
All right. So I guess I would make a motion to commit the 464,000 for the grader.
How, is that a?
See, it's.
How do we do that? Because we're pulling so out of.
So if you're, if you're encumbering funds, you technically have to have a purchase order or some type of a contract or something binding the purchase.
Okay.
So you would actually have to accept the quote that was received from Windmill for, for the purchase of a Komatsu grader.
Okay.
At the price of 464,000 with X coming out of.
Yep. Okay. So I make a motion to accept the, the quote from, what was it?
Uh, Windmill.
From Windmill for 464,000 for the Komatsu grader. 282,000 of that to come from capital reserve and the remaining balance to come from unreserved fund balance for 2024.
I'll second.
Motion to second. Any more discussion on it? We look good. All in favor, say aye.
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 Point of clarification. Um, you said unreserved fund balance?
Or?
The highway truck capital reserve fund.
The 282 to come from the capital, highway truck capital reserve fund and the remaining to come from unreserved fund.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's what, I'm pretty sure I heard. At least that's what I under, that's what I understood whether or not that's what I actually heard.
Then could I also make a motion? Officer Alvarez, did you have a chance to look and see what the cost for the cover would be for that?
Yeah, they were 300, about 380 bucks.
So 400.
Wow, look at that. Could be like 19,900. Just 100.
1,000 even.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed 20K.
I make a motion. Well, we don't have a quote. It's just, with this.
How much was it?
That's a quote.
Yes.
That is a quote.
I give you guys a.
400, right?
Okay. So I make a motion to approve the expenditure of up to $20,000 to purchase the Polaris Ranger 2024 SP570 North Star for the police department.
Second.
Motion to second. Any more discussion on it?
So is there an order in case stuff?
Is there a what?
If, is there an order of, of, um.
Priority?
Priority in case we don't have enough money.
You can do whatever you choose.
I would say that the grader is higher priority.
Well, this is going to be interactive. I mean, they're going to go give a commitment tomorrow for it. So it's, it's going to be. We're not, the money's going to be gone anyway. So I don't know about, I don't, I'm just saying that for what you're asking for, I don't think it's even going to be relevant because it's not going to be there.
That's why I think leaving the, you know, 75,000.
No, I, I, I know. I know. That's why the 70 is whatever it is left in there.
Yep.
I mean, that's, I, yeah, I'm optimistic.
What's the return policy?
So we, any more discussion?
No, I guess not.
Uh, vote. All in favor, say aye. Uh, vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye? There we go.
Thanks for coming in.
We have nine thousand dollars that are uncommitted right now.
And that's next on the list.
Can we take some of that out to? You could take that nine thousand, put it towards the grader. Or towards the grader or towards the Polaris, it doesn't really matter.
Again, here's one of those questions.
Open discussion.
Open discussion on this one. Because we have nothing else where we've really purchased for nine grand that's gonna do anything, so we, we gotta put, we'll put it to something that's gonna be.
Right, let's put it towards one of these two items.
Like seventy-two hundred, I had seventy-two hundred written down from Ozzy. The server at about seventeen thousand, the back room for thirty thousand, community center paving for sixty-two hundred would leave us with about seventy-two hundred, is that not accurate?
Sixty-two hundred, thirty thousand. Uh, ninety-two hundred and change, because we had sixty-two, four ninety-eight uncommitted prior to the items that you committed at the last meeting.
Can we just make a motion to put the balance of the ARPA money towards one of those two items?
Absolutely.
Right.
All right, I'll make a motion to put the balance of the ARPA, uncommitted ARPA funds towards the, um, UTV.
I second.
So we're, so the motion there is to put the, uh, remaining balance of the ARPA funds, uh, to help pay for the UTV.
Yes.
Um, we've got a motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye? Well, that brought that down by half almost, good. So then we're gonna put that extra nine thousand back into our bottom line, so.
Right, it'll stay, right, whatever, yeah.
Yep, so it's like eighty grand we have now.
Right, hopefully.
Well, yeah. Let's be positive, John.
You know, we still got a week to go.
Yeah, so next year, can look at trying to sell, if we get any money for the existing, the current grader?
The current grader? We can try.
Yeah, I think it's.
Or something to somebody.
Just investigate, we investigate what we, you know, I mean, if it's working, if we get it working and it's doing something, you know, it's not too bad to keep going, maybe we do, can use two, because we have enough drivers.
You say keep your grader?
Temporarily.
No.
But, again, while I haven't, while we have the new grader, I mean, when we get it, hopefully we'll get it, you know, in a timely fashion.
I mean, you could have a check on the trade-in value of it, too.
But it's also times where you can also start listing it for sale, and then if somebody comes in, there's no delay saying that they can't take it because we're waiting for our new grader, it's right there. Instant gratification, here.
The other, the other item that we have to fall back on, I just want to put it out there for discussion purposes, is we still have thirty-two thousand dollars in those Senate Bill four oh one extra highway block grant funds that if, if it does get close with the purchase, we could also fall back on that, it would just require a vote. But that would just be a reallocation of funds. Those monies stay in the general fund, they don't lapse.
So it's just an FYI?
Yes.
We don't need a rush to go spend it, so that's why we're not gonna talk about it.
It's like the only emergency fund left for the highway right now.
So, yeah, let's just leave that back in that, that back corner, call it a day.
Okay.
Anything else, guys, on that?
I don't know, we just spent half a million dollars.
Well.
Less than an hour.
If that's driving down, uh, AIDS per se dirt road, then that would be, uh...
Well, your accounts payable manifest was just shy of a million paying the school.
All right, great. All right, guys, let's, uh...
Kind of finalize the budget for next year, then?
Hmm?
We good to go move forward with the budget for next year?
Why, do you want, is there anything left we want to talk about there? That's where I thought we're on right now. That's where I'm going with this.
We haven't talked about it yet.
That's coming into this budget. So.
So the general budget is within the, in the warrant articles, so this is it, within the four percent. Thought we got that to.
We did, but the, now the discussion is, is do we want to move some things around, or, I mean, we don't really have to move things around because it's within the line item.
Right.
It's just a matter of, I won't be able to know how we want to move forward with that position and that role for two thousand twenty-five.
I thought, we kind of figured that it was within a line item that was okay.
Do you feel that you can find the room in your administrative budget?
I, I think we probably can with some line item shifts I don't know about administratively, I mean, I guess it depends on how long additional positions remain vacant and as long as there isn't a surge on like the cost of electricity or heating fuels in the upcoming year, those are the unpredictables. I, I do think that a lot of departments, especially with a fuel line, back when we were budgeting it over four dollars a gallon, um, I do think that there is some wiggle room there that we could pull, you know, five thousand dollars here, five thousand dollars there, and as we discussed, um, you know, we've, we've talked about the electricity. We've continued to keep it a little bit cushioned, but realistically, if trending over the past two years, if we haven't had a significant increase like we were expecting, um, that really impacts the budget, then yes, we could probably make it work within. It's risk. And just hope for a, um, a budget that passes this year, not the default again.
Yeah, because we won't have ARPA to save our butt and.
Right.
Right.
It's gone.
So could, um, Mr. Tran get us a list of, I guess, highly important projects that should be done next year, like with the top of the list, I know he gave us the list in the prayer, he's running a lot, he can't spend a hundred twenty-four thousand dollars next year. And then, I guess, a breakdown of what, will, will we have to get out of pocket versus will we be covered by his role and his position to be able to fix things?
Right, we kind of talked about a three-year, breaking it into three years, and, yeah, that's, that out of pocket from him is important to know.
I have to follow up with him because he, I think he was going to go back to, um, his report and further break that down for you.
Right, that's what he committed to.
And so we're good with the warrant articles and the amounts that we could put in those warrant articles? Because we're, I'll be, well, we'll be presenting to this, this, the budget committee.
We put it, we put it basically to where we can be.
Um, so what they're gonna be looking for at their next meeting on January ninth, that's the budget committee I'm referring to, they'll be looking for your, I'm sorry, the second, thank you. Um, they are going to be looking for your, your final budget with recommendations, so.
Okay, so we need to.
We to look at for this evening is to recommend as they're proposed now or make adjustments and then recommend.
Okay, so. Yeah, I don't see any changes, really.
No.
I'm gonna public say this, I still think the, uh, the recycling center salary line is too low. If we want to pursue getting extra people, people that want to work there, um...
And that's with the increase that you proposed, because we did increase it by ten thousand.
Right.
Yeah, but divide that by four people, it's only twenty-five hundred bucks, that's nothing. You know, I mean, what is twenty-five hundred? I mean, it's, you're not gonna significantly change anybody's, you know, and that's a department there that we've always been lacking uh, trying to find employees, you know, especially since we went down to the fact of being a part-time position where years and years ago, the dump was open full-time and we paid full-time and, um, you know, but as the town grows, we went to part-time for our, for our recycling center. So we went the opposite way that most, most places would go, but.
It's probably a couple bucks an hour increase. Oh, it should be all right.
But I think, again.
But they're working thirty hours a week.
But I.
Yeah, no, that's what, so, all right, so maybe it's a little less than two bucks an hour, I kind of guessed at twenty, twenty hours a week would be two forty an hour. Let's be realistic. There's three of them, not four of them. We need three, we need a fourth to cover swing shifts, not a fourth for thirty hours a week.
So again, I think it's just gonna be, in my opinion, a matter of throughout the year, next year is shifting things in line items, because I think that the.
I'm just making it publicly, so I'm just.
Yeah, I think the final dollar bond is what it is, I mean, I think we need to, do need to focus on, and I agree with your point, is having that fourth role to cover for summertime vacation or vacation now this time of year.
Right, we definitely need coverage, we need that swing person.
Because it'd be easier to put it in there than to take somebody out of the highway who's making a lot more money because he can drive and get a CDL.
Yep.
And then ask him for overtime pay to work on a Saturday, which is gonna cost even more money to the town. We won't be going beneficial in any way of.
Nope.
So, but you can't bring, I mean, the whole pay scale has to increase for everybody that works there in order to get that fourth part-timer, if you want to call him a part-timer, or fill-in guy, it's gonna be worth his while or her wild.
Oh, we still got some money in the merit compensation pool, too.
Okay, but we're.
No, I get it.
You know, I get, my.
I get it.
But, that's where it is, that's where it is. Obviously, we're not, no one here is jumping up to say they want to give more into it, so we'll, we'll keep it at the ninety-three then.
I'm not sure where you're gonna get it from, you know, and. I mean, I don't know whether you could decrease any more of the warrant articles. Now, we hit those pretty hard.
Yeah.
We did.
I mean, again, right, next year, you guys could decide to use some of that merit, maybe that'll go and then the line item will change for the year after, that's gonna be your guys' decision, so.
It's never easy.
No.
And there's no doubt, everybody likes to receive a pay hike. No doubt about it.
Anything more anybody else has seen that wants to talk about on the line items?
So do we need to?
So we're gonna be ready to put this towards the budget committee for their approval?
Yeah.
Is comfortable doing that? I mean, that's where we're at, so.
Right.
But then we go through the actual warrants, but in January to take the official vote on each.
Correct.
Yep.
Right, so we're not taking an official vote today, we're just, that's what I was trying to figure out.
Yeah.
Right.
All right.
Right, you're just, you're voting on your recommendation.
So the ones that we've, right, okay, so do we need a motion for that, just to move forward?
Yes, please.
All right, I'll make a motion that we move forward with the budget and warrant articles as previously discussed.
I second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Guys?
We're going to take a peek at what we have for next year, because right now, we're encumbering the position through the first quarter of next year.
Correct.
Um, and then we're going to make a decision based upon the importance of the projects that are needed to be done for two thousand twenty-five and then figure out the best way to do it, whether it's going to.
Encumbering, encumbering, you're gonna cover it for the first quarter.
First quarter. Right. Yeah.
Right, and then from where?
Where do we go?
What we see in the future is where is gonna determine the need for the position.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's clear, that's an answer.
Anything else? I know we're getting on public, right?
What about the, uh, the, the, John?
Excuse me?
John Dicker told us last week about the.
So that's a non-expense warrant article.
But you didn't approve it.
Right, we didn't, we didn't, well, when do we do all that stuff? I mean, basically, we got.
That's gonna be like the second week of January.
Right, so we got.
It's a warrant article, Steve, so we'll go.
We got, we got a warm enough commitment on it. So.
Oh, they're not on your, I slid them in just to see if we could get them processed before year end. They just came in from recommendation from the assessor. Um, so there's, there's three requests for abatements, uh, two of them are impacted by exemptions or credits that were applied to the tax accounts after the first half bill, so there was a, um, a credit on the tax, or a credit amount for the tax that was due for the year, so we have to do an abatement for those two, and then there was another one that, there was a subdivision. The parent lot got left on the tax roll, so we taxed the individual lots that were created from the subdivision, plus we taxed the parent lot. So that's what those three abatement requests are.
Yeah.
George, see him?
No, I, I looked at him while I was waiting.
We need a mark, all right.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the abatements for MAP fifty-five, Lot three, sub Lot forty-one, MAP twelve, Lot nine, MAP eleven, Lot three.
I'll second.
A motion and a second on the abatements request for approval. All in favor, say aye.
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 Is that all three or is that just two?
Those three.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, ending this meeting, is there any public comment?
I make a motion to go into non-public for RSA ninety-one dash A, code three two A.
Second. Um, once we actually enter into non-public, we will exit that part of the meeting and we will adjourn our, our Board of Selectmen's meeting directly right after. Uh, we just need a roll call vote for non-public. Hi, Steve Welch.
Hi, John Ducker.
Hi, John Moore.
Hi, Tim DeBribe.
Good night Nottingham, have a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, uh, have a great New Year's, and we'll talk to you all in two thousand twenty-five.